Welcome everyone to the November 26th City Council meeting. Welcome to everyone here and at home. The first item up this evening is the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. If you come to the podium, which is over here, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residence, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And so I'm gonna officially open that and I'm waiting for the sign of sheets and we'll get going. Thanks very much. We have 21 people signed up. First up is Deborah McGee, followed by Jason Gray.
My name is Deborah McGee. I live at 297-55-LUSK ROAD. Eugene has been my community for 27 years. I was raised in the Methodist church. My mom was a church organist, so you can know I was there every week. While there, I learned to love my neighbor as myself and to do unto others as I would have them do unto me. While I don't always succeed perfectly at this in my life, those values are why I'm here tonight. Those values are why I joined Occupy Interfaith. Occupy Interfaith is a group of citizens from 16 faith-based Eugene-Springfield communities. We're citizens who want to live in a community that loves all our neighbors, a community where we treat them as we would want to be treated. Homelessness can happen to anyone. Eighty percent of bankruptcies in the U.S. are caused by a healthcare crisis, thanks to our broken healthcare-for-profit system. My arm's in a sling, I'm having a little healthcare crisis. My second surgery will cost thousands, but I won't experience bankruptcy and I won't end up homeless. However, a big healthcare crisis in my circumstances, if they were different, and I could be homeless. There but for the grace of God, go you or go I? If I became homeless in our community, how would I be treated? As an outcast, an outlaw, and untouchable? If I were homeless in our community, I might not have a safe, legal place to sleep or a welcome place to go to the bathroom. I might be sleeping at night illegally and be awakened by police and asked to move on. But move on to where? Where would I go if all the safe, legal places were full to capacity? Do we live in a community that doesn't care about all our neighbors? I hope not. Do we live in a community where, when citizens do care about their neighbors, the community leaders stall or move so slowly as to do nothing? I hope not. As a person of faith, I am called to be hope for the hopeless. I am called to act for justice. I am called to demand inclusion and a dignified life for everyone. As citizens of faith in Occupy Interfaith, we are committed to the fairness of all of our neighbors having safe, legal, dry places to sleep. All means all, everybody in, nobody out, even those that some of us might consider last, lost, or least. The people of faith are not gonna go away. We have to, in our arrogance, remember that there but for the grace of God could go you or I or your sister or my brother or our children. I know that we can solve this problem, we can have safe, legal, dry places for all of our neighbors this winter, and I know that you can make this happen. Please do. Thank you.
Jason Gray is next, followed by Sabra Markroft. And Jason, see if you can adjust the mic to really... and then, I'm listening and I'm saying, don't have it too close to your mouth.
How does that work, ma'am?
No.
Feel closer.
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 That's good.
Testing one, two.
And then, if you do anything with your hands, it usually makes... I'm sorry, but I'm just, I'm trying to help, sorry. I'm just telling you that you can hear the tap-tapping on the mic, too. So I'm just trying to be helpful, not to make you nervous. Go ahead.
My name is Jason Gray, and I wanna speak out, one for Occupy, one for Sleeps, and one for just the homeless veterans out there. And I was brought over to Eugene by St. Vincent de Paul and VA system for the Grand Perdian Program. They literally drove over to Newport, Oregon, picked me up, brought me over here, put me in a motel room for two weeks. And my housing fell through, through St. Vincent de Paul, no fault of the VA, still dealing with eligibility requirements and stuff like that. You can imagine how the VA works. Nonetheless, I'm homeless, through no fault of my own. And I've had to sleep on the streets. And I've gotten nine tickets in the last two and a half weeks. Three of them for criminal trespass, one of them for eating a sandwich. This is starting to get a little bit out of hand. And we need to figure something out to where people can sleep legally. Just rest. I mean, we don't even need, like, to build a fire and have hot dogs, just rest, so we can get up and do what we gotta do the next day. And that's the problem that's happening lately. Some of us aren't just passer-throughs. We're over here because the city of Eugene brought us over here. I'm one of them people. And I'm getting tickets for being in the city of Eugene. I have no place to go. I have social anxiety, PTSD, I can't stay at the mission, it just doesn't work for me. I'm not the only one out here like this. And I just hope that the City Council can understand the situation and how serious it really is and what needs to happen. Thank you.
Sabra Markroft is next, followed by Jean Stacy.
Hello, my name's Sabra Markroft. I reside in Ward 7. Section 4.815 of Eugene City Code Number 3, "No person shall camp in or upon any sidewalk, street, alley, lane, public right-of-way, park, or any other publicly-owned property or under any bridge or viaduct unless otherwise specifically authorized by this code or by declaration of the mayor in emergency circumstances." Subsection 7, 8, and 9 of City Code 4.900 penalty states, except as provided in subsection 8 of this section, 4.815 is punishable by a fine not to exceed $200. Eight, a willful violation of Section 4.815, where a violation consists of camping in a vehicle parked overnight on a public street, is punishable by a fine not to exceed $500 or confinement in jail for a period not to exceed 10 days or both. As used in the subsection, willful violation means a violation that occurs after a person has received within 30 days preceding the current violation a citation for violating Section 4.815 or a written warning from a peace officer or other person authorized by the city manager to issue such warnings that the person was violating Section 4.815. In addition to the foregoing penalties, a vehicle used in a willful violation of Section 4.815 may be immobilized or impounded pursuant to Section 5.693 through 5.705 of this code. A first violation of Section 4.191 is punishable by a fine not to exceed $350 or confinement in jail not to exceed 100 days or both. A second and any subsequent violation of Section 4.91 is punishable by a fine not to exceed $2,500 or confinement in jail not to exceed 100 days or both. In addition or in lieu of such fine and/or imprisonment, the court may order the person to perform community service as determined by the court. City Code 5.135, "Storage of vehicles on streets, cars and campers can only be parked in the same spot for 72 hours and must move to a different block before returning." Okay. What this all boils down to is that people are being punished for life-sustaining activities and for being poor. If their vehicle breaks and they can't move it fast enough, so sorry, out of luck. And they are only being punished for these things because they have no homes. None of the emergency health authorized by council will impact the legal situation of the unhoused in Eugene. So I'm here to ask you to act immediately to lift the camping ban between the hours of dusk and dawn in all areas of Eugene to allow people to sleep safely, a necessity of life. Thank you.
Jean Stacy is up next, followed by Helen Legori.
I'm Jean Stacy, 944 West 12th Alley. When you read the camping ban, the 4.815, you'll see that it doesn't ban recreational use of tents. It's only for the purpose of a temporary place to live. In other words, the camping ban is against the purpose of living, of staying alive. As you sit there, I know you, I know what's going through your mind, you're saying, "Oh, yes, but we don't enforce that." My answer to you is, yes, you do. Or you say, "Only we, we only do it to the bad guys, like down in the exclusion zone." That's not true. It happens to people that I talk to every day. I'm in contact now on a daily basis, a weekly basis, with about 200 people that are homeless. And I hear from 10 to 20 every week that have been rousted that week. Sleeps has been formed to plan for this winter because the city hasn't planned. The city had its first meeting just two weeks ago to talk about what are we gonna do about the homeless, even though the task force last April gave you recommendations, you have not approved even one of them. You haven't even seriously discussed or analyzed them. Well, Sleeps has been planning. We are unhoused people helping each other in unity with the community. Our mission is to establish safe, legally entitled, emergency places to sleep using our First Amendment protest rights for the purpose of holding the 4th, 8th, and 14th amendments to the Constitution. It is about giving the unhoused community back its voice. They are now economic refugees from a system that has collapsed around them. And instead of treating them as refugees, we are treating them as criminals. When you, Sleeps tonight demands that the City Council take an immediate step tonight to lift the camping ban in Eugene. Section 3 of 4.815 gives the mayor the authority to declare a state of emergency and lift the camping ban. Seven times last week at a City Council workshop, the mayor used the word "emergency." In other words, she has already declared that there is a state of emergency for those who are unhoused this winter. The weather report you'll be hearing says that emergency is happening now. If she won't fulfill her responsibility, we're asking the council to lift the camping ban, to let people live, stay alive through the winter. In addition to lifting the camping ban, either by the mayor or the council, whoever will accept the responsibility for all those lives out there, we also ask that communities be allowed to form to be safe, so that those who choose to leave drug, alcohol, and violence free can do so. Thank you.
Helen Legori is next, followed by Jerry Smith.
Helen Legori of Eugene, Ward 2. And even though she's not here, I would like to acknowledge Betty Taylor for her out-of-the-box thinking on Wednesday, the 21st, asking if unhoused people could sleep in city vehicles. She gets it, that any port is better than facing the storm out in the open. Being out of town on the 21st, I was pleased with the positive actions taken that night, as reported by Mr. Russo. I was also amazed that $200,000 were found for winter assistance. So now that you've addressed some low-hanging fruit, and before you allocate any more money, I ask that you follow up on the results. And if it's not achieving its purposes to bring people inside, you roll it back into the winter assistance, so it can be used for advancing the not-so-low-hanging fruit. The task force recommended, recommended. I'm particularly interested in the OVI, OVE pilot program. It has a high possibility to dispel the bad memories of campers, of camps of old, like Amity Park and others. They were reaction responses, not plans, to the emergency at hand at that time. OVE is a way different animal. It has such a high potential for success with its management requirements, security enforcement, and small size. It's been a struggle, struggle to develop affordable housing in Eugene, even with the wisdom of spreading sites throughout the city. OVE is in a struggle to provide safe transitional housing and citing opportunity villages throughout the city would be wise in the future. First, we need the initial village and its success. Do you have the will to support OVE? Will you say as a body that you want OVE to happen? I know from past homeless action coalition campaigns, City Council can change its position from "red light, our hands are tied," to "green light, we approve and will assist in implementation." Thank you.
Jerry Smith is next, followed by Tracy Jocelyn.
I'm Jerry Smith, a retired social worker at 5041 Saxon Way in Eugene. And I'm asking the mayor, the council, and the city manager a slightly different request. And it comes from my own experience. When persons are doing good work but are overwhelmed, they ask for help. As a volunteer helping our homeless citizens, I am asking for your help now. The volunteer, interfaith, and charitable nonprofit community are going beyond maximum to meet emergency needs. Community volunteers are doing their best to help our citizens who are homeless. We've been asking for the city's help for a long time, and as the work of being a volunteer safety net to the inadequate government safety net is proving overwhelming to me, my church, and our community. We know that the city has wanted to help for a long time, but the city also appears overwhelmed. I ask you to do as we are doing now, as I'm doing now. Ask those with more direct responsibilities to help. I ask the city of Eugene to ask the state of Oregon to provide more help for our distressed homeless citizens. Specifically, I want you to request that the state legislators, who represent Lane County and Governor Kitzauer, do more to shelter our citizens. What used to work were state-funded general assistance, social services, and mental health outreach. GA is gone, social services and mental health services have shrunk in the face of the economic crisis. If anything of that nature can be restored, great. If not, then add more primitive helps, like government-funded emergency shelters, staffed with supervised peer counselor assistance in social services and mental health. State revenues are down as federal policies have allowed the manufacturing jobs of Oregon and of great many American workers to go to international corporations. Yet I am asking the city of Eugene to request the Oregon State Legislature and Governor Kitzauer and Oregon's congressional delegation to ask for federal emergency help to shelter our citizens. The people that come asking for help now are far more desperate than they were last year, far more desperate than they were a month ago, and I hope that you understand that, I understand that you are struggling, but please help them in their struggle.
Next is Tracy Jocelyn, followed by James Robert Matheson.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Jocelyn. I live in each of your wards because I change where I sleep each night. I am sorry, Mr. Clark, missed the last meeting, because people from Portland and Seattle's houseless communities, organizers, activists came here and spoke with us, and it was very uplifting. I also welcome you, ma'am, to the council, and I thank Betty Taylor for her voice. This year, this February, will be my 30th year in Eugene. My son is a native, he is doing well, thanks to the communities, communities caring and gracious people, including teachers. I studied at the U of O 3:00 PM program in sustainability with Dr. John Baldwin. Sustainability, homelessness, same issue. My first public policy class talked about letting people fall through the cracks when they don't have a phone to keep them hooked up with work, then the government gives up on them. I was unable to get up from my seat after that little tidbit of information, and I'm not sure it was to my advantage to study homelessness and poverty, but I do digress. I'm here to ask Mayor Kitty Pearson to use her power to lift the camping ban. You can declare a state of emergency and allow camping in city parks, for example. That's why they were created. Instead of 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, please change it to dawn till dusk. We are also begging for designated areas where people will self-manage while being allowed fires to cook and stay warm, "port-alets," which is the new term for portable toilets, boundaries, and garbage service. And aside, it's really hard to recycle when you're homeless. If you need an excuse for an emergency, I myself am homeless, three years. I tried staying at people's houses, but they kinda... I'm a good, hard worker, and I had to protect myself by leaving every place I've lived, 'cause people pay a lot of money for their rent and they need help. And I don't need the help, I need to get my life together. And so I'm in my little white truck, and I kinda feel at peace, because I've stood up for myself and I'm very employable, I'm a good person, I'm holding out for goodness, and now instead of worrying about my friends on the streets sleeping in my bed, I gotta tell them, "Sorry, man, I need the cab and my pickup for my own safety."
Thank you. James Robert Matheson is next, followed by Hayden Manis Brew.
I'm here to talk to you about the unhoused issue they have in Eugene, pretty much across the country. All of you are college-educated, so I think-
Will you introduce yourself, please?
James Robert Matheson.
Thank you.
I'm sure all of you know about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, and how emotional states can, of distress, anxiety, fear, and depression, can inhibit a person's ability to both learn and move on, how those states, when extended over long periods of time and exasperated by police harassment, can lead to despair to the point where one gives up. And it's not a pretty sight. I've seen people build themselves back up, many men at the mission who have had jobs, houses, lost it, jobs, houses, lost it again. And to not have a place to call home, to not have a place to lay your head and feel that you're safe, from which you can explore the world, it's very disheartening and becomes very disorienting, and it breaks my heart to see this happen to people. I myself, yeah, I've only been homeless two years. I was a truck driver for 11 years. I spent four years honorably in the Army. I get a little money from the military, I could get housing if I wanted to. But the truth is, I wanna walk with these people. I don't think that it's right that this camping ban and all the things, I'm not gonna bring them up, that come across as socioeconomic class warfare. It's like people are being rejected and pushed down rather than being built back up. And people, if they're gonna succeed, have to feel like they're cared about, they have to feel like they have hope, and the only way to do that is to provide shelter and to pat them on the back and say, "Yeah, things are bad now, but I hope they'll get better. At least you have a place over your head from which you can go forth and find employment or take care of your legal issues." And that's what we're asking for. It doesn't seem like it's that much to ask for either, you know? But there you have it.
It's Hayden Manis Brew, followed by Diane Shaka.
Good evening. My name is Hayden Manis Brew. I've been a citizen of Eugene for over 30 years. I've lived in every ward in this community. Today, I'm unhoused, which, like my friend Tracy, means I live in every one of your wards, depending where I lay myself down to sleep tonight. So I come to you with a request, and then I come to you with a demand. So first, I will read my request. Dear Mayor and City Council of Eugene, if you will not house, help the unhoused create a village to house the houseless, and if you will not help the unhoused create a garden so the houseless can feed themselves, then I would respectfully request that you work to create a cemetery for all the houseless, because we're going to need it. As my representative municipal government, I want you to understand that I would rather visit my friends while they are alive, which should no longer be possible. I would like a dignified place to go visit my friends, so that I could talk to them in their rest, so that I could leave flowers before I go. I think it's the least we could do. If you won't house us, at least give us a place to rest in the end of it all. Now my demand, as a private citizen. The ban on camping is unconstitutional. But we could throw that out the door, because it should be far more important whether it's humane. It is inhumane. You put people at risk every night by not allowing safe, legal places for people to sleep. People will be raped, they will be beaten up, they will have their stuff stolen. And if that's not enough, they might freeze their butts off, because tonight the estimated temperature is 34 degrees. That's two degrees below zero. I will be sleeping out there tonight, two degrees before freezing, excuse me. I don't know where you're gonna be sleeping tonight, but I'm thinking it's probably a little warm. All I'm asking is you've got people out here at risk. Your responsibility as human beings, to accommodate the best you can. If the best you could do is a cemetery, I'm good with that. My name is Hayden Manis Brew. I love you. Have a good evening.
Diane Shaka is next, followed by Ally Valkyrie.
Ladies and gentlemen of the, of the council, Mayor Pearson, good evening. I am Diane Shaka, currently living in Councilor Poling's district. In light of the heavy-duty winter weather, winds up to 40 miles per hour, and cold rain arriving Wednesday and continuing through the week, and in light of Eugene, the vegan warming centers not being open unless it's 28 or below, and not at all during flooding events, and in light of our city's social services capacity, filled to capacity, I am asking the mayor and the city council to lift the ban on overnight camping effective immediately, that our unserviced economic refugees, AKA the homeless, may shelter themselves against the oncoming elements. Thank you.
Ally Valkyrie is next, followed by Michael Carrigan.
Ally Valkyrie, Ward 1. So city halls, it's, they're empty, and you've now spent over $100,000 of taxpayer money on fencing to keep people out. I must say you have some expensive taste in fences, but I digress. You say that using city halls as shelters is undoable, 'cause there's no heat. Yet I know that we could have installed heat for less than the $74,500 for the initial fence, and now the over $20,000 to make it taller, so that protesters can't make their point. It's really cold out there tonight. Even an unheated city hall would be much preferable to having to sleep outside. The only thing worse than having to fall asleep outside, of course, is having a police officer wrestle you in the middle of the night and tell you to move on. As people have said up here, you know, Betty gets it, this is just unconstitutional, it's unconscionable. In Los Angeles, between the hours of 9:00 and 6:00, people get to sleep wherever they want, and they do, they're all over the sidewalks, they're everywhere. I know people who work in businesses down there- They're everywhere. I know people who work in businesses down there. They have to step over people every single night. And the police can't do anything about it, because they're bound by a settlement agreement that arose after four years' worth of federal litigation. In 2006, the Ninth Circuit decided that punishing people for sleeping outside for lack of public shelter is unconstitutional. It's cruel and unusual punishment. It's a violation of their Eighth Amendment rights. And after four years' worth of litigation and millions of dollars of cost to the city, they had to enter into a settlement agreement that said they couldn't enforce these laws upon the homeless unless and until they built over 1,000 units of permanent shelter. Five years later, those units have yet to be built, because the city can't afford it, and so people sleep all over the streets. We have an identical situation here in Eugene. And not only is it constitutionally wrong, and it's ethically wrong, but from a risk management perspective, you're also in trouble, because you've already told, you're told you're going to be sued over this. You know you're going to be sued over this. So if you decide to lift the camping ban now, it looks a lot better when your butts are dragged into federal court. Maybe we won't spend four years and $1 million worth of litigation, only to be stuck in the same kind of settlement agreement. How are downtown business owners going to feel if people are allowed by federal decree to be sleeping all over the sidewalks downtown? That's what's going to happen if you don't stop prosecuting people for sleeping. They're sleeping. They need to sleep. Lift the camping ban. Do the right thing. You have a choice here to do the right thing. There's no point in prosecuting people for actions that they can't help. You think that ticketing people for sleeping is going to keep them from sleeping outside? Sleeping outside is punishment enough. Go sleep outside. Try it. One night. Try it. Stop prosecuting people for life-sustaining activities. Thank you.
Michael Carrigan is next, followed by John Monroe.
My name is Michael Carrigan, 1439 West Fourth Ave, in Ward 7. I want to thank you for allocating at your last meeting $200,000 plus to help the unhoused this winter. It was a great thing you did, and thank you. But we, we need to do more. Strongly urge you to continue to allow the tent camping at vehicle campsites rest of this year. Calc is part of that program. We have had two people in tents behind our, our house for, for many, many months, and it has worked very, very well, because we have people there. We're, we're their allies. The neighbors are their allies as well. It works well, but we're the only site in the city that's doing that. So we urge the city, city staff, and others to come up with some other places. As part of the Opportunity Village Eugene, we're developing some micro housing for that program. An idea we have, which used those little micro houses to go on some of the sites, where people could do the tent camping. Come up with a lot more sites. It could really help folks out, and send an example to the rest of this country, that Eugene continues to be an innovative place. That solves problems. Weather report for this winter is already this week. It doesn't sound good. And so we support others here who are calling for a repeal of the camping ban. It is an emergency this city is facing, and we need to pull out all the stops to help this community get through this winter. You did some last week, but help us get Opportunity Village Eugene going this winter. Help us find a site. Help us go. And we have a whole community there to work with you to get this done. And also feel the camping ban has to go as well. Let's be proactive. Let's do it in the Eugene way. Let's not wait for the courts to force us to do it. So we can do it and develop a program that works, that is safe, that that is legal, and that brings this community together, to roll up our sleeves and come up with a solution that helps all, all concerned. So we really need to do all, all we can, not only help the unhoused, but all who, who live in this community to get through this winter. Thank you very much.
John Monroe is next, followed by, looks like, Rick Kents.
Hello. My name is John Monroe. I'm in George Brown's Ward. I'd like to go back to a moment, City Council, last year, at one of our large Occupy assemblies, when we were making calls for democratic reforms. And Counselor Clark, you reiterated a trope that was frequent throughout the attempted responses to Occupy, which was, "We do not have a democracy. We have a republic." And I would argue, I would agree, that we, in the city of Eugene, is not at all democratic. But since a republic has traditionally been defined as a representative democracy, in which the representatives demonstrate that they give a crap about the public will, that would make it a republic. But unfortunately, this is a dog and pony show. This government is demonstrating the last year that's more interested in catering to the various anonymous business interests that go under names like DBA, MBA, DEI, COC, and operate locally in much the same way that the PACs that Citizens United affirmed operate at the national and transnational level. That is manipulating quietly behind the scenes and making sure to donate generously to certain representatives in order to make sure that their policies are put through. For example, a $10 million tax cut at a time when over 100 teachers were cut from school systems. Why was that simply put? Because a few interests wanted to have a lot of students concentrated downtown, and knew that their businesses would do well, and again, didn't give a crap about all those students who no longer have the number of teachers for that elementary school that was closed down, or for the alternative school like Wells Springs, which is currently facing massive windfalls because of Bethel cuts. Again, we saw the similar policies in 2006, when this organization chose to give $75,000 for the Downtown Guide Association, which is a glorified hall monitor system to make sure that the homeless behave themselves. And they call in the cops, three more of which we now have, at over $100,000 fielding costs. I think it's actually over $200,000. So almost 3/4 of a million dollars for the three police that are fielded downtown. Again, we see time and time, if where you put your money, where your mouth is, your money is going all towards making sure that a few small elite interests in the local scene, and their connections in the larger national development are doing well, and you don't care. Or this government doesn't care about the people. It's not a question of lack of sympathy. It's not a question of lack of awareness of what's going on with the homeless. This government knows quite well what's going on with the homeless. It's much more a matter of whether or not this government cares. And caring is demonstrated in actions, not in vague proclamations, not in statements of being a human rights city, not in talking about how much you want to progressivize this town. What this town, or what this government is demonstrating is much more interested in the marketing schemes of DEI's advertising campaign than it is about actually demonstrating that we are a human rights city. Thank you.
Rick Kents is next, followed by David Ivan Pacioni. Is he here? No.
So?
Oh. Is Rick here? Yes.
Okay. Hello, Senate and people. My name is Richard Kurz. I'm a homeless, uh, I'm a homeless Social Security, I draw Social Security checks each month. And I've been here going on eight years now. And I lost my ID, because the people at the mission, you know, I don't know if you ever stayed there at the mission on the guy's side. It's kind of like a cattle call. You have like 30 people in one shower. And when you're, when you're showering, all your clothes sometimes come up missing, and, you know, billfold and stuff. And ever since my first week there, somebody stole my Nebraska ID and my billfold and everything. And ever since then, I've been on the, I haven't been able to rent apartment or motel, because I don't have no ID. And, you know, I, one agency tells me to go to another agency, you know, they get, try to get ID and birth certificate. And, you know, I'm just tired of it. But the main thing I'm coming up here for is, I have electric wheelchair I bought out of my own pocket. And there is no place downtown without being harassed by the police of Eugene. Each time I try to plug in, they're always coming in. I've had seven tickets in the last two and a half months for, I can't remember what the, the thing said, but when they went, it was more or less defrauding innkeeper type thing, where, when I plugged my wheelchair in, it's, it's cost me like $150 to $200 each, each time they've given me a ticket. And I don't think it's fair for me, because now I'm, I got one arm, one leg, and one eye. And I can't walk for very long. And most of the time, and you can ask the guys I hang around with on the streets, 90% of the time, I'm yelling for people to help me push my wheelchair to. I think there's like two outlets in downtown that I can safely charge at without being harassed by the police. And I just wonder, I just want to know why, you know, there's two city parks over there across the street from this place, where, you know, both parks has like, all together like 11-
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Ivan Pacioni is next, followed by Robin Bloomgarden. David?
Howdy, councilors. My name's David Pacioni. This is a letter of mine that came in the register guard last week. More homeless options are needed. I don't favor building a house for every homeless person in Lane County. It would cost too much, and I think it would be wasteful. I've had experience with some homeless people who, when invited to live in a spare room, didn't do their share of the contributing. I believe a lot of unhoused people are in their situations because of their own shortcomings and lack of responsibility. On the other hand, I believe the police and those, and those who give them their orders have been wrong in not letting those who have cars or vans live in them, as long as they are respectful of their neighbors. That also goes for those who are simply sleeping on the streets and aren't loud or obnoxious. The tent city Occupy Eugene built in seldom used Washington Jefferson Park last winter, had a kitchen under an overpass that fed 600, 600 hungry people each day. Unfortunately, the park wasn't perfectly sealed against those excluded because of antisocial behaviors, and the cops kept bringing back those kicked out, back, so as to undermine our efforts. Sleeps, Safe Legally Entitled Emergency Places to Sleep, has been working on how to house those without a home, basing its model on Portland's and Seattle's example. I think we should help them. And I must say that I've been homeless before, for a while, and it's a possibility that could happen to me at any time. And I'm, I'm always thinking about that possibility, and trying to prepare the world for, for me to have it easier if that were to happen. Thank you.
Robin Bloomgarden is next, followed by Joe Tindall.
Robin Bloomgarden, and I'm in Ms. Zaret's Ward. Thank you. I'm here tonight because time is getting late for the homeless in Eugene. The weather is getting cold. How would you like to try and sleep out in the weather like today? I certainly wouldn't. I'm asking you, the city council, and the mayor, if need be, to immediately grant an emergency exemption on the camping ban in Eugene. I would like to thank you for considering this seriously. And lastly, I would just like to end with, I've been interacting with the city council off and on for about a year now, and I have yet to figure out how one person interacts with you and gets responses to things that we bring up. I, I just don't see any way to do that, other than haranguing you by email all day long. But that's not public. There's no public way of getting responses from any of you, and I find that really disturbing. Thank you.
Joe Tindall is next, followed by Andrew Brand.
Good evening. Joe Tindall. I applaud allocating $225,000 to assist the homeless, but is this well spent? The measure is dollars per bed year. A bed year is one safe, legal, warm, dry space for one person to sleep for 365 days. For example, 200 Egan slots for 20 freezing nights would be 11 bed years. To determine productivity, we must divide the city's $225,000 by total bed years created. How many bed years are needed? The city does not yet have solid numbers for the homeless students in our schools, for unhoused parents of these students, for homeless veterans, for street kids, and so on. The one-day census is known to be a severe undercount, so I will continue to use the estimate given in private by the director of a major local service provider, who stated there are probably 10,000 homeless in the greater Eugene-Springfield area. In April, May, June, July, and September, I urge this council to create a homeless commission recommended by the task force. Please, somebody make a motion to do this today. This group might work on getting better numbers, but for now, how many of the needed 10,000 bed years will the city's $225,000 create? 60 here, 30 there, 15 for the Egan centers. Best case, maybe 150 bed years. That's $1,500 per bed year. Expensive and inadequate. What about Opportunity Village? With the micro housing model they advocate, advocate to the exclusion of any other possibility, maybe we get 30. But for day one, they're still pushing a tent city, because none of their micro houses will have been built. Hold your breath on this one, and you will turn blue. So if the mission provides 600 bed years, city money pays for 150, and Opportunity Village creates 30, what about the other 9,220 bed years still needed? Assuming a lifetime of three years, for $70 per bed year, greenhouses made of conduit and UV stabilized plastic, having indoor toilets, kitchen, shower, workspace, and electricity are the lowest-cost way I have found to keep a large area dry, reasonably warm, and comfortable. Using the Opportunity Village Behavior Contract, greenhouses on city property could quickly house hundreds. The same is true for the old city hall. $70,000-plus to quarantine a building likely to remain vacant for years and then be demolished seems mean-spirited, intransigent, and a waste of resources. Thank you.
Andrew Brand is next, followed by John, it looks like, Pinkstaff.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Brand. I'm the Development Director for Evergreen Housing Development Group. We're the developer of the River Road project, and I'm here tonight to request you approve the action item granting a 20-year real estate tax exemption to the River Road project. Evergreen has worked to create a long-term affordable community serving working households who earn too much to afford deeply subsidized housing, but too little to afford quality market rate housing. Our project will put into action many of the goals and policies of Envision Eugene. It will provide high-density housing along a dedicated transit corridor. It will add to the, it will add to the housing creation goals of both multifamily housing and specifically multifamily affordable housing. It will give back financially to the community by creating jobs paying above-market Davis Bacon prevailing wage rates for construction, and four new full-time jobs after construction is complete. This development brings a public benefit, meets all city code requirements, and will further larger community goals. For all of these positive reasons, I ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
John Pinkstaff is next, followed by Michael Barnhart.
Good evening. My name is John Pinkstaff. I represent the Evergreen Development Housing Agency. You've just heard from Andrew Brand. Very briefly, we agree with the city manager's report and recommendation, in which you found compliance or mitigation with Eugene Code 2.939, sub 2. Basically, this is 216 unit for low-income persons, which means families or individuals at or below 60%- at or below 60% AMI. We agree with the city attorney's finding, also advice, that the housing dispersal policy, which applies to housing at or below 50% AMI, does not apply to this development, which has 60% AMI. Nevertheless, this project does meet the spirit of the housing dispersal policy insofar as it does further the policies in other city concerns found in the consolidated plan, the growth management policies, and the Envision Eugene. It provides a mixture of housing types, the choices at affordable densities along key transit corridors, and it also will promote achieving the 500 affordable housing units every five years, as the policy is in the Envision Eugene. And finally, it also furthers a June 2012 technical document, which has a policy favoring a mix of single-family and multifamily residences, and 1,600 multifamily housing units, which are the goal to be achieved. So for those reasons, we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Michael Barnhart is next, followed by Richard Bauer.
I'm here tonight to ask you to deny-
Could you give your name, please?
Huh?
Could you give your name, please?
Richard Bauer. I'm here tonight to ask you to deny the tax exemption on, I'm Bauer.
But what happened to Michael Barnhart?
Not here.
Not here? Okay.
On.
All right. Proceed.
I'm here tonight to ask you to deny the tax exemption on this thing, pending your review of the documents that I have submitted to Becky Wheeler at the City of Eugene, of some major concerns that I have about this. I'm not going to labor this, but in conclusion with this, I would like to see the project reduced in height, which I knew they're going to move forward, probably, reduced in height from three stories to two stories, to make it a little more amelible to the rest of the River Road area. Thank you.
Christopher Logan is next, followed by Michael Gannon.
I'd just like to be sure that you have my comments. I gave them last week because I couldn't stay until 10:30.
Thank you.
A gentleman over here has mentioned that some government officials are sort of in the pocket of developers, and I'm hoping that none of you are like that. I hope that even in your minds, you don't even want to be like that. But what we have here is we have an out-of-state developer, a building contractor who wants to make money on our neighborhood, and he's saying there's a public benefit. Look closely at his application. Where is the charitable purpose, the public benefit, of this project? Well, the people are allowed to grow food for their tables. How big are these pea gardens? In total, they're about the size of 10 parking spaces. There are 266 parking spaces for cars that will be leveling asphalt all over the last remaining farmland in my neighborhood, and there'll be 10 or maybe 12 parking spaces worth of food-growing territory. Now, who among the 600 people that are going to live there gets to grow food there? Do they each get like one little lettuce, or do they have to fight for it or draw straws? It's absurd. He says he's going to build a community center and have educational opportunities and parties and stuff like this, but he doesn't say who's going to pay for it or what activities are going to happen. He says he's going to have low electricity, green sort of amenities, but he doesn't say what, and he definitely states that he does not know at this time what he's going to do. Is this the kind of place that is good for the occupants? No. Compared to the 50 or maybe 100 units that are available right now at the same price or lower, this is a tenement. This is 13 large buildings crushed together on seven acres of farmland, and the rest of the territory is going to be paved with asphalt. Is that a place that you want your kids to grow up? No. So it's no good for the people who live there, and it's horrible for us in the neighborhood. It's really an ugly thing that we're going to have to deal with over and over again. We're going to have to deal with garbage, noise, the traffic in the small lanes out behind our houses. This is where my daughter rides her bicycle. We're going to have 268, 66 cars going to work and coming home and jamming out to a party. And they're not going to be in the same mood that the people in my neighborhood drive slowly, they take care of each other's kids, they look to see who's coming. Okay, but for all the harm, where is the public benefit? There are already enough units at this price available, more than enough. There are houses for less than $832 that a family of three or four could move in and have a good time.
Thank you. Last up is Michael Gannon.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I just wanted to briefly support the idea of an emergency lift of the ban on camping in the city of Eugene. And I would like to try in some meager way to suggest comparisons with other incidents in history. First of all, it's an executive order, as I understand it. The mayor can do it. Of course, the council could also vote to do that. And additionally, so it's been used many times in American history when an executive, a leader, person familiar with all of the arguments at play, is able to jump forward and do something extraordinary. So at the risk of seeming audacious, I would say, take a look at the Emancipation Proclamation. That document made its way around the executive office of the president in many ways, and lots of people looked at it and talked about it, and there were a lot of pros and cons before it was actually issued. And the president did it by himself. He lifted himself at that moment into the historical era, and will be forever remembered for that. And then, more recently, our friend Barack Obama decided that the Dream Act was really more important than he could persuade the Congress, and he used an executive order to make the Dream Act a reality. And I think many of us who pay attention to politics realize today that the returns to Obama from that were extraordinary. It may have won him the election. So I would hope that all of you, as councilors, would look carefully at the opportunity you have to shift the direction of history. And I think, try to look at the amount of information you're dealing with. Who is studying the pros and cons of such an executive order by the mayor? And when you start studying it, spill it out into the community, and act on it urgently. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public forum and ask for comments from city council. Not seeing any. Yes?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone for coming and speaking so eloquently about the problem of the unhoused. I think you're right. I mean, I hope we can do something very soon, something significant, at least start the pilot programs. I really don't want to see the Ninth Circuit Court get involved if we can do anything to prevent that from happening. Thanks again for coming. Appreciate it.
Okay. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. That is an ordinance adopting amended hazardous substance tracking. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The Toxic Board recommends adoption of the ordinance to amend the hazardous substance tracking instructions to streamline reporting procedures for the Toxic program and bring the document in alignment with current city standards, and to remove three hazardous substances from the list of reportable chemicals to bring the program's list into compliance with the law.
Put the motion on the table.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5079, amending the hazardous substance tracking instructions for reports due beginning April 1, 2013, and removing three hazardous substances from the list of reportable chemicals. Second.
Seconded. Discussion. Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, I had a question. Hopefully, the three substances being removed from the ordinance were due to a 1999 Court of Appeals ruling. It's 2012.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Piercy and city councilors. I'm Joe Epley, the staff person for the Toxic program. The Toxic program is very complicated, and I have been doing my best to learn everything about the program and doing a lot of research on what has been done and what hasn't been done. And in my recent research, I discovered that there was still three chemicals on our reportable chemicals list that are now regulated only by FIFRA. So I don't know how long they've only been regulated by FIFRA, but it is against the law for us to have those on our list.
Okay. So in the future, will that be kind of a regular process that you'll go through to --
Yes.
Do they change that frequently?
They don't change that frequently, but the Toxic Board and I have now developed a process for me to review all of the lists that our program encompasses to make sure that we stay current with the times.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. That's all ahead, Mayor.
Everybody okay? So I think you're ready to vote on it. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're up to item number four, an ordinance concerning used merchandise dealer provisions. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The state of Oregon has made changes to the regulations of certain used merchandise dealers, commonly referred to as pawn dealers. This proposed ordinance brings the city's regulations into compliance with the state regulations and proposes other changes aimed at strengthening the regulations to increase the likelihood of being able to return stolen property.
Put the motion on the table.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5080, concerning used merchandise dealer provisions and amending Sections 4.989 and 4.990 of the Eugene Code 1971. Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, does this final version contain any of the suggestions that were made by the gentleman from Eugene Coin and Jewelry that was here during testimony?
It does.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ready to vote on this?
No. Thank you, though.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. We're going on now to item number six, an ordinance concerning sign standards and amending Sections--
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor, you skipped item five.
Oh, sorry. Tent camping, I did.
I did, too.
How could I do that?
Yeah. Brilliantly.
I can't imagine.
That's unprol.
All right. An ordinance continuing to allow tent camping. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This action is for an extension to ordinance number 20484, which expands the definition of vehicles to include tents strictly for the purpose of legal overnight car camping on permitted sites. If not extended by council, the ordinance is currently scheduled to sunset on December 31, 2012.
You put it on the table?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5082, extending the sunset date of ordinance number 20484 to December 31, 2014. Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Discussion? Mayor?
I mean, Councilor Zelenka? I had a question, which kind of arose from some of the testimony, and that is related to this topic, and that is if someone's able to speak to what the city is doing to comply with the recent court ruling and the implications for how we're managing this type of program or other related issues.
If the recent court ruling is the one that some of the speakers referred to, it was a 2006 ruling, and we have written opinions in the past about that, probably back in 2006. It's been a while since I looked at those. It doesn't, it wouldn't impact what this ordinance does. This just continues the present allowance of tent camping, where cars can now camp. And I can provide to you a copy of those legal opinions that we've written on that subject.
So there wasn't a more recent judgment that would be relevant to us?
There, the one that I have seen in the emails related to Los Angeles, there are two different decisions. One relates to an issue that speakers, I think about three, four weeks ago, talked about, which was whether it's parks employees, it was really the parks employees picking up belongings of others. That doesn't relate at all to this issue. The decision that somebody was talking about tonight is a 2006 case, which also arose out of the city of Los Angeles, Jones versus City of Los Angeles.
I think I was thinking of the first one, but, okay. Thanks.
This just simply carries on the camping program that we have that allows you to add tent camping to your vehicle camping.
Correct.
Okay, which we've been doing for quite a long time. And I guess my only comment before we vote on this is I think we would be, and I know the St. Venes would be very pleased if we could find more people. I know they've been looking everywhere to find more sites for both vehicle camping and for tent camping. So I know that they have spent, in fact, I believe the last time we had a council meeting, when Terry McDonald was here, he talked about the effort they've made to find new camping sites, and they thought by the time this round, this one was done, they would have gotten up to, I cannot remember the number, 15 new sites or something of that.
I don't recall. It was 15, yes.
Yes. Michael, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 15 new sites. So that's, anything else you wanted to add?
Did they get there?
Yeah, did they accomplish that?
Did they get there?
Did they get there, Michael?
Over the course of this past year, yes, they have. Over the course of this past year, they have added 15.
So they've added 15 new sites?
15 people in the program.
15 people, as a, put three to a--
It's a little more complicated in that some sites have come on, 15 new sites have come on, but we've lost some, but the total gain has been about 15 people, singles only. This doesn't count the family camping, which has added a few spots also.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Far?
Just a comment, Madam Mayor. The Eugene's camping ordinance that allows for camping of this type, it was a groundbreaking ordinance that originated in, I believe, was 1998 or perhaps even 1997, when we had an extensive and full discussion with the entire community regarding the camping situation in Eugene. And it's an ordinance that has been modeled in other communities, and in fact, surrounding Eugene, the county itself is beginning to allow some camping of a similar nature in its parks. So what the city of Eugene did to allow camping is actually taken camping into an entire new realm, and it is providing for a model ordinance for other communities. Thank you.
Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, Michael, are we doing anything practically to find new sites? Are we just relying on St. Vincent de Paul and other folks to do it?
Both city staff and St. Vincent de Paul have been working to identify new sites. We have the--
We of the city, since the expansion, were able to add two, three car sites. We've added more of a public process to it, though, so the neighbors don't react, or ideally don't react as much to it. So it has slowed things down. I think with our work that we're doing with our other discussion related to homelessness and finding a potential campsite has also revealed in our analysis potentially more public sites might be able to host more vehicle and tent camping.
So 15 isn't very many. What's preventing it from being 50 to 100 or 200?
I think -- that's a good question. I think some have come on later. I think what St. Vincent de Paul would tell you is that they didn't really build much momentum in adding sites until the end of this year, but they do see the value in continuing the extension. And I think it's just a matter of how we identify sites and the criteria that are needed to ensure that these are legally designable sites.
Is the coordinator that we approved last council session that we're working on some of these issues, is that a person that can help identify some of these sites?
I would look into that. That wasn't the original focus, but that's also a position we're still working to define.
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea. Is there anything that the council can do to help promote getting more sites, do you think, besides extending the camping, the ordinance?
I could let you know as we uncover more sites if --
Okay.
If anything's needed.
Yeah. Please do. Thank you.
Well, I do think there is at least some tension between, let's say you had a huge number of increased sites, you would have some staffing issues, you'd have to deal with the, what do they call them, the porta potty?
Porta less.
There are things that come with that when you add more numbers, which we do want to do. It does have its costs in terms of oversight, and it does have its costs in terms of provision of other kinds of services around it.
Okay. Ready to vote on this one? Okay. All those in favor? Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you all very much. And if anybody out there watching this wants to call and volunteer a site, we'd be liking that a lot. Okay. An ordinance concerning sign standards. City manager?
The council is scheduled to act on proposed amendments to the city's sign code. The amendments would consolidate several exemptions from the permit and fee requirements, set size limits for exempt signs, and specify a time limit for city staff to act on a signed permit application. The proposed ordinance would resolve a legal challenge by the ACLU to the current sign code. The council has held two work sessions and a public hearing on the proposed changes. Since the last work session on October 24th, the draft ordinance has been amended to set a different size limit for banners so that the exemptions will allow for flags of a standard size.
Council president?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5074, an ordinance concerning sign standards, including the findings attached to that ordinance as Exhibit A.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Councilor Farr?
Just a question regarding the flags of standard size. Should somebody be flying a U.S. and an Oregon flag? Then that is not illegal.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Okay. We think we're ready to vote on that one? All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Our last item up, a resolution approving a low-income rental housing property tax exemption. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Evergreen Housing Development Group has requested a 20-year low-income rental housing property tax exemption to build River Road apartments. The project includes 216 apartments, affordable to households earning 60% area median income or less, and will be located on a vacant 7.7-acre site south of Belt Line on River Road. The council was asked to take action on the application tonight. Your decision on this tax exemption request must be based on the criteria included in the city's code, and this criteria can be found in the AIS for this item.
Put the motion on the table.
I move to adopt a resolution approving a 20-year low-income rental housing property tax exemption for the property located adjacent to 1410 River Road, Eugene, Oregon, Sessors Property Account Number 1837937.
Moved and --
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Councilor Zelenka?
Yeah, I had some questions and some comments. Obviously, this proposal has generated a lot of concern amongst neighbors immediately adjacent and in the neighborhood. And so I just, I had a couple of questions to kind of raise up some of those concerns, and then I had some comments. So one of the things, Becky, I was hoping you might be able to speak to is, it appears that the council is required to approve this because it meets the criteria laid out in policy. And as far as I'm aware, there wasn't a requirement for extensive public hearings or outreach, but I wondered if you could just review for us briefly what kind of public outreach there was and what opportunities for public input there have been.
Sure. You're right. There's not a requirement in the code to provide a lot of public input. There is a 20-day comment period that the code says that must occur. In addition to that, the Neighborhood Association held a meeting at which Evergreen Housing attended and provided information to the neighbors. We also had a housing policy board meeting that was public, and we had some neighbors show up to provide their comments at that. And also, we had the public forum. Andrew tells me that next week, they're also having another meeting for the immediate neighbors that are touching the boundaries of the property to talk more about the development and its design.
Great. Thank you. And then another item that I think got a lot of attention from folks in their public comment had to do with kind of the relationship of the low-income tax exemption and our housing dispersal policy in terms of affordable housing. And so I was wondering if you could speak to the relationship between those two pieces.
Sure. And I'm glad that you used both low-income housing and affordable housing in the same sentence, because as we talked about a little bit about last week, it's interchangeable when staff is talking about the same types of housing. But the housing dispersal policy does address those families and individuals at 50% area median income, where the low-income property tax exemption is applicable to or is eligible for households at 60% area median income. So the city attorney has provided information and opinion that the parts of that housing dispersal policy are not applicable due to the income that this particular development is targeting.
Great. Thank you. And, you know, I know that folks who are concerned about this housing development are probably not going to be, you know, made to feel better with that little bit of information, but I thought it was important that we make sure that that's out on the record. You know, I think it's a really challenging process when we have a big development that then also is getting a tax exemption come into an established neighborhood like we're seeing in River Road. And I encourage the Evergreen Development Company to continue the outreach that you've been doing and to continue the dialogue that you've initiated with the neighbors around the design and working to make it fit in, in terms of architecturally with the surrounding community. But I also think we desperately need this kind of housing in Eugene, and I disagree with the idea that there's plenty of affordable housing for folks who are working. A lot of the folks who are living in their cars have jobs and are not able to afford an apartment to live in. And so I think this is a very important development for us, in spite of my concerns around tax breaks to private developers. So I also, you know, I live in Whittaker, and I have low-income apartments right behind me, right across the street from my single-family dwelling. And frankly, they're some of the better neighbors in the neighborhood. So I also challenge this idea that because we're creating an affordable housing unit, that that's somehow going to bring disruption to the neighborhood, and they're not going to be good neighbors. I really want to encourage the folks in River Road to rethink that thinking and embrace these new residents into your neighborhood. I think they could be excellent neighbors and enhance your neighborhood rather than being a drain on it. So that's my little pitch. So I just wanted to make those points and get those issues raised, and I thank you for your time.
Councilor Zelenka?
Yeah, I also wanted to point out that I disagree with the notion that we have plenty of affordable housing in our community. Having been involved in human services for a very long time, I know that that need is great. And I think that these types of projects are the types of projects that we should be incentivizing to get them built, and they're desperately needed, and I think they'll be an asset to the community. I hope the developer will work with the surrounding neighbors to make it as appealing as possible, given all the constraints that developers have with regard to costs and what they can do with the site. I had a question for you, Becky, which is, I understand the housing dispersal policy doesn't apply here because it's at 50% of average area median income, and this policy's at 60%. I'm wondering why they're not the same number? Was one federal policy and one's local, or can you explain the history?
I anticipated that question, and I tried to do a bit of digging. The housing dispersal policy is from 1996, and I don't have the information about when the tax exemption program was put into place or why the discrepancy is there. It is something that I can look further into, but I don't have, I'm not sure why their numbers are different.
Is there a reason that you can think of that it wouldn't be the same?
No federal numbers have changed or definitions have changed, so really, I'm not sure.
Okay. Because the way it works now is that there is that difference between 50 and 60%, so that the developer can go up to 60%, and that means people have a little higher income and therefore probably a little less risk on their part in terms of vacancy, but probably not substantially less, given the amount of money that we're talking about. Okay. Thanks.
Councilor Farr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A comment and then a couple of quick questions. Regarding low-income housing, certainly, we don't have adequate supply of low-income housing. We've been working for many years to bring ourselves up to a level where more people have access to housing. And this council, for decades now, has done tremendous, done yeoman's work in making sure that we do have more affordable housing available. This is a good project in many ways, in that it does provide a significant number of housing units in a very good location, in terms of transit, in terms of shopping, in terms of schools. But I do have a question. Recently, we had Bascom Village that raised a great deal of attention and a great deal of public input, including several large community forums. And this one, not a great deal, smaller in size really, didn't have a great deal of public attention, didn't have a great deal of public input. Could you just iterate why the difference between Bascom Village and this?
Sure. With Bascom Village, the city provided federal home funds, and the land bank site, there was more public process needed to, one, come to council and get your approval to provide those funds and the site, whereas with the tax exemption, it's a totally separate process.
Thank you. That covers it close enough. The, you know, the issue of putting families in housing is such a significant issue in the community. If we look at all of the conditions that affect kids and learning in school, housing, and adequate housing is one of the most significant factors involved in many different problem areas for kids. So providing the housing is significant in reducing, for instance, child abuse, for instance, inattention in school. And if you look at things statistically, inadequate housing causes a tremendous downstream problem in many, many different ways, both in the schools and beyond the schools. So we have to support low-income housing in whatever fashion that we can. However, it does have to be done legally, and we do have to make sure that all of the i's are dotted and all of the t's are crossed. Some questions have arisen regarding this project, regarding the density of the project. Can you talk about the density of the project and how that does meet all requirements?
While I'm not in land use planning, I did look at the zoning for the site and the proposed density, and they are at the maximum density for the medium-density residential site, but they're not over. So they're meeting.
They are right at the maximum density.
Correct.
And so that, once we do approve this, and needless to say, this council will approve this tonight, based upon the legal opinion, then if it is found that there are some errors have been made in that, will there be recourse down the road for people to have, to take issue and to raise questions regarding the continuation of this project?
This procedure, getting the tax exemption, is just the first step. The project does need to go through building permit. It'll be reviewed by all of our staff and planning and development, so it will meet the zoning requirements. They won't be able to go over what the code says they can.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're ready? Yes, Councilor?
And then George has. I would like to follow up on what I was talking about before. And I would like, Becky, if you could follow up and find out what's, why we have this difference, and if not, maybe we could bring this back as a work session and make the policies consistent, or figure out why they're inconsistent. If there's a good reason, then we can keep that. But I'd like to follow up on that in the near future and change that if it's necessary.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you. Yeah, I just would like to point out that, you know, 45% of the residents of Eugene are rent burdened, almost half. That includes people that are buying houses, not just renting. And what that means is that they're spending 30% and possibly more of their income on their housing. And that means you're rent burdened. And so we still have a long ways to go to provide affordable housing for people. And I'm all forgiving for giving tax breaks for affordable housing because we're going to spend that money one way, the money that we don't have, but it would be spent one way or another on other programs that would go to human service commission entities. And as long as we can keep people in houses and prevent them from becoming homeless and becoming an even bigger burden on the systems, it's always a good thing to support affordable housing, and we need a lot more of it. I've got a couple of questions, though. It says, you know, I'm just looking at the chart here.
Okay.
And of the 60%, what rents could be charged? And I noticed that in every category, they're actually going to be, start off with rents lower than that, that are going to be closer to the 55% of MFI, so that's a good thing. And part of that, though, is you subtract a utility allowance. Do we know what the utility allowances would be in each of the, like for a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
Yeah, the Housing and Community Services Agency, HACSA, creates the utility allowance charts that all of our affordable housing providers use every single year, and so it changes annually. For example, the tenants at River Road Apartments will be paying electricity only. The utility allowance for electricity on a one-bedroom unit is $60.
Gotcha.
So the max rent that you see, you subtract the $60, and that's what the actual out-of-pocket rent will be, and they will be, like I say, paying their electricity on their own.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I guess, you know, and then in another part of the AIS, it said fair market rents, current fair market rents in Eugene-Springfield range from 637 to 1128. Is that 1128? Is that for three bedrooms?
Is 11, can you repeat that?
1128?
Three-bedroom, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted some way to compare that to this chart. Okay. Well, I, yeah, I'm going to support this. I would rather see it at 50%, like stellar and Bascom Village. And I agree with Councilor Zelenka. I think we do need to have a work session to kind of reexamine the policy. And for instance, I just wrote down some quick thoughts without even really thinking about it too much. I think 60% should be lowered to 50% median income. I'd like to see a pro forma submitted from the developer, like what developers, you know, of the Mupts get, like, what are your expenses? What, you know, what are your expected return on your investment? What are your --
We do review that as part of the application.
You do?
Yes.
I'd like to see, I think the council, I think councilors, I think it'd be useful if we saw stuff like that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's already being done. Good. And then, you know, we can discuss whether we want to try to limit it to nonprofit agencies or not. But, yeah, I think in the future, we should have a work session. But yeah, I think in the future, we should have a work session and just review the whole thing.
I think Housing Policy Board will be happy to participate in that also.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, please indicate. Six in favor, in opposition, one. It passes. Thank you. And with that, we finish the business of the evening.